Okay, I'm going to open up the regular city council meeting for Monday the 16th, and I've just lost my script. Oh. And, uh, so we hereby call to order. We have invocation by Todd Luce of the Grandview Christian Church. Todd, would you please rise, and then we'll stay standing for our pledge allegiance.
Godspeed, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together, and Lord, we pray that you would just have a blessing upon this meeting, all the decisions made, all the economics and the financial decisions as well, that they might just be a positive thing for this community, Lord. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Todd. Hey, Kathy, would you call a roll, please?
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Councilmembers Smith.
Here.
Ekstrom.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Gill.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Sharaki.
Here.
Meisner.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, item number two, approval of the minutes for the May 2nd, May 6th, and May 4th general government meeting. Your motion.
Did you raise your...
Mr. Havens.
(inaudible) very small addition to the minutes for the regular council meeting of Monday, May 2nd. Page... Talking about the S.D. Smith annexation, the third line found the parcel eligible, and we should add "and" the words "and suitable pursuant to the city's annexation policy."
Okay. So, if...
I'd ask you to amend to have those two words.
Mr. Ekstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we accept the minutes from the Monday, May 2nd, 2016 meeting with the noted changes to line 10A, or I should say, item 10A, with the attorney's recommendations, as well as the minutes from the special council meeting on Friday, May 6th, and the minutes from the general government committee meeting on May 4th.
Okay. Are there any other corrections? Any conditions? Mr. Weed.
Thank you. I was not at the meetings, however, on the minutes from the general government committee meeting on May 4th, item number three, cultivation of industrial hemp, the very last, no, next to the last sentence, it says, "And draft legislation to prohibit use of industrial hemp." Did you, that, did we want that to say growth of industrial hemp?
Rather than use, yes.
Prohibit the use, wasn't it, Havens? Use within that district?
Well, it could be either, either, but as a use.
As a use.
Industrial hemp is excluded, or to be excluded is what staffs understood.
In the rural living.
Okay.
In rural living, am I correct?
Yeah.
In rural living zoning?
Oh, yeah. Well, then, my suggestion would be...
Not a use, not an acceptable use for, make it a prohibited use in that RL, I think is where we are.
I think I would change the wording to say to prohibit, to prohibit as a use.
And that would work.
And then get rid of "of" industrial hemp. I was reading it to say that industrial hemp was prohibited, and then, if I lived there, I might buy hemp ropes.
As an agricultural use.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, are there any other corrections to that? That's rather lengthy.
Motion maker, okay with that?
Yes, again, I'll make that change.
We can add that to your motion.
That change to...
Call for a second.
Second.
Mr. Weed, okay, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki.
Oh. Just approve the change, yes. For the minutes, yes.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Council members' announcements, are there announcements of council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ekstrom.
We have there our public works committee meeting this Wednesday at 4:00 PM.
Public Works Committee, 4:00 PM, here in the chamber.
Sure. Mr. Havens has also handed us a draft of the different ballot questions for consideration on Wednesday. There's five drafts there, and sure that you have a chance to review those, and again, talk to any of your constituents on the wording, and which ones we may want to move forward with for, as a ballot question. It's my understanding that, I mean, we're not, we're not up against the wall as far as timing goes, but we're getting close, and we need, need to have a decision.
There's, there's plenty of time left, but I was asked to draft the possible ordinance length... No, I've already passed those out. These are extras. Kathy, you should have one at your place.
Yeah, I don't have one.
Well, okay, I'll, I'll give you one after the meeting.
I was just noting that it wasn't here for the record.
It, it didn't, it didn't get in the packet, and I don't know whether Ashley wished to address these questions at the, the meeting on Wednesday, but I want you to have them if that's part of what you want to do.
As far as timing goes, with our Citizens for Better Streets, our hands are a little bit tied as far as being able to print literature and educational materials, or really solicit serious donations until we actually have an actual ordinance number and resolution. Yeah, ballot question.
So, for that reason, we should probably figure out the, which verbiage we're gonna use.
I think the sooner we get this going, the better off we are.
And please note that once you have set that ballot question, the items that's done here at City Hall will therefore cease.
The meetings here at City Hall.
And any printing material and such, campaign stuff.
Okay, once that starts, okay. Any other announcements, or...
Mr. Mayor, I have an announcement, just for city council members, for your information, for the downtown development authority. Right now, currently petitions are being circulated amongst business owners, property owners and residents, to petition, to ask for city council to do an election for a downtown development authority, and they will, are scheduled to present the petition to city council on June 6th, at which point we will consider that question if we want to move ahead and conduct an election. And if other residents or people in the community want to show their support for a DDA, they can also sign a petition down at Chamber of Commerce at their own time.
Ashley, I have that for the general government committee on June 8th, is that still correct?
Yeah, that's right. It's June 8th, yes.
That's 4:00 PM on June 8th.
Mr. Gill.
There's a planning commission meeting and workshop tomorrow here in the lower level of City Hall. The workshop starts at 6 o'clock, and the planning meeting starts at, at 7:00, and the public is invited to both of those functions.
Anyone else on council have any announcements? Okay, the mayor has one. I would like to call, is Mr. Zachary Strickler in the house? Mr. Strickler, would you mind coming forward and addressing us? I know this young man, and I know he's rather eloquent, so I'll ask you to take the microphone from there, or find a stool to step on. Can you, no, there isn't any. Can you take another?
Yeah.
Or pull it down. Pull it down to, so we can...
Other down.
No, the other way. The other, the other, the other down, that's right. Mr. Strickler is with the Canyon Exploratory School, we call it CES Middle School, he has announcements with 7th and 8th grade, and he has announcements regarding the Rudd exhibit behind our library. Would you go ahead and enlighten us on that, Mr. Strickler?
Uh, yeah.
You are Mr. Strickler, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, I am Zachary Strickler, and I am one of the 7th graders, um, working on this exhibit from Canyon Exploratory Middle School, and, um, the Rudd exhibit is about the ruds, one of the very first families that came to Canyon, and, um, uh, we have been working in conjunction with the Royal Gorge Regional Museum and History Center, and, uh, we have been working on this project since September 17th, and, um, I, as well as all these, um, the 7th and 8th graders from my school, would like to invite all of you, and all of you guys, to, um, our grand opening on May 20th, this Friday, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and, uh, there will be refreshments, so, yeah. Any questions, or...
The time is what, again?
Uh, the time is from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, this Friday.
It will be in the library in the Rudd house.
This will be, um, at the Royal Gorge Regional Museum and History Center. It wa, it's the municipal, uh, building, uh...
612 Royal Gorge Boulevard?
Yes.
Close, okay. It's right across from where I work.
Yes.
That's the old city administration building, so, Wednesday?
Uh, Friday.
Friday?
May 20th.
May 20th, from...
From 5:00 to 7:00 PM. From 5:00 to 7:00.
To 7:00, and refreshments are served.
Yeah, there are refreshments.
And we would invite the public to attend. And council.
Yes.
To show our support. Well, thank you, Zachary.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. That's always fun stuff. Okay, we, the adoption of the consent agenda, the agenda and the consent agenda, Kathy, would you review the consent agenda items?
Members of council, the first item on the consent agenda is authorizing the mayor's signature on the Gold Belt Cooperative Agreement. This was a recommendation at the general gov, most recent general government committee. This is an agreement which is a cooperative effort of 10 area agencies for the management of the Gold Belt Tour National Scenic and Historic Byway. It tries to balance between the protection of the historic and rugged character of the byway and the promotion of tourism activities. This agreement does not commit any funding from the city at this time. The next is resolution number 13. This was also, this was recommended at the April 20th Public Works Committee. This is a resolution would demonstrate council's support for a temporary location of a temporary landscape amphitheater at the Royal Gorge Bridge Park. Next item is authorizing the mayor's signature on a MOU, which is between the city and Fremont Adventure Recreation, which provides that FAR will pay up to $4,000 per month, or $24,000 annually toward the cost of an experienced trail building equipment operator. Such employee will be hired by the city as a seasonal employee with the city being reimbursed by FAR. The next item on your agenda is, we have one bid for anthracite filter material for the water department to flint sand and gravel in the amount of $7,082.25. This is recommended by the May 4th General Government Committee. This is for the routine maintenance and purchase of anthracite coal for the filter beds at the water treatment plant. This is purchased to replace the loss of the normal media that is lost during the normal operation of the plant. Two bids were received from the four solicited, with this vendor being the low bidder. Next item is the list of bills, and with that, I would open it up to anything you may have to add or ask of...
Any additions, corrections, or questions? Could I have a motion in a second, council?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Ekstrom, would you call the roll, please? Any discussions on the motion?
We want to adopt the agenda, too.
The agenda? We're adopting both.
What'd I do wrong this time? We're good. Did it work?
Rookie. Okay, go ahead. We are adopting the agenda and the consent agenda with that motion, so, okay?
I'm all for that.
I'm gonna add that for you, thank you.
And I'll second that.
And you'll still hang in there with a second, thank you so much.
It's a little much, but...
Must be the, must be the rain. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gill.
Um, aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Approved by majority vote.
Do you have an administrative report, Kathy?
A few fun things to announce.
There you go. Go ahead.
Uh, just a reminder that you guys have their city, uh, the meeting with the county commissioners here at City Hall, Monday, next Monday, the 23rd, at 3:00 PM. Also, in the report, we have the city tree planting day this Friday, May 20th. That's up in the Royal Gorge Park, that's to begin at 9:00 also. We also have a schedule in there, if you plan to participate, there's some details there in your administrator report. Also, sales tax revenues were up for the year 4.52. Also, wanted to report on Blossom Festival. This year was a success, as we were blessed with great weather, spectators from around the region, no really any incidence of any significance, and I just want to thank the Blossom Festival and the many volunteers that they have, fellow governmental agencies that helped with some of the security issues and stuff like that, and also city staff, they did a great job, so I just wanted to make note of that for this year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, number six is the citizens' request to speak to council. This is if you have put in a formal request to speak. We'll have a timer here, you can please come to the microphone and let us know who you are and what your address is.
First, we have Lisa Heims. She wants to talk to council about Main Street parking.
I guess I don't have to say my name, she already said it. I just wanted to discuss Main Street parking. As the city council knows, I have been maintaining the flowers on Main Street for about a week now, and maybe it's two weeks, I think it's two weeks. Anyway, I am having great difficulty between 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning getting to plants. Also, there are cars that haven't moved for a week at a time, plus I have had businesses coming to me and mentioning to me about mainly the people that just leave their cars all day for days. I, I think maybe that especially during our busy season, I mean, I have been speaking to other businesses that haven't come to me and asked them their opinion. I have not gotten to everyone, but some of them have suggested that maybe we might consider enforcement during our busy season, so that people can come down to Main Street and be able to park and, and come and go. I realize it only affects a few blocks, but I have seen in being down there every single morning, I have seen the inability for the street sweepers to properly clean the street because of the overnight parkers, and there are quite a few of them. So, I just, I just bring this as a suggestion to consider. I know that I spoke to the Canyon City Police Department about it, because Mr. Lancaster had said that he thought they were enforcing the Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, no parking from 4:00 AM to 6:00 AM, and they said, no, in fact, they were not enforcing that. So, I don't know if it's something maybe we need to look at again, about being able, we have such beautiful streets now, I mean, the city's done a great job of, of really giving us some beautiful streets, and to not be able to get into the curbs to clean the trash and the cigarette butts out of the curbs because of the cars parked there are, are really detracting from everything we've tried to do to make it nice there on Main Street. So, just a suggestion for us to reconsider.
Thank you, Lisa. Any questions of council?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to propose maybe putting this on a meeting, on an agenda for maybe a general government next month.
Okay.
We can discuss the, not enforcing at least for street cleaning, in addition, again, maybe during the busy season, perhaps enforcing some type of, um, in two-hour limit, but, again, we can put that, we can discuss that during our general government meeting if there's enough interest with council.
We can put that on the agenda, and I think at the same time, we ought to ask the representative of the police department to be there, okay?
Also, the Canyon City Merchants Association, because I believe they were the first ones to approach about this, right?
Well, I, I actually brought it up about a year ago.
Okay.
Here at city council.
Okay.
And, um, and it's the businesses that have come to me again, and of course, we did speak about it at CCMA, about the businesses that belong to CCMA that have mentioned it. And I will let you know that in watering the flowers, I, I have put a couple of nice notes on some of the cars that park directly under the flower, and asked if it would be possible if they could park just a couple spots over so that I could maintain our beautiful flowers on Main Street, and they take the note off and throw it away and don't move their car.
Okay.
They're usually found in the gutter there with the cigarette butts.
Yeah.
We'll put that on a general government meeting.
Lisa, that gives you about three weeks, actually a little over three weeks, to, you know, gather some data and talk to those business owners and kind of see what...
I'll continue, I'll continue to talk to them.
What they would like.
I have had a couple of businesses that said, we don't have any problem, so, I have had that as well, but I think the majority has been that they're seeing an added concern, especially during our busy season.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That would just be, make sure that's June the 8th.
June 8th.
June the 8th. Um, do I need to be here?
I'm gonna be at my daughter's, my granddaughter's high school graduation in Northern California.
Well, if you can get me the, the information, then we can probably take it forward.
I can get you all the information, yeah. If I miss that, I will be in trouble.
Again, there might be someone from the Merchants Association that has that same concern, maybe they could show up.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with Scott. We need to have somebody from downtown, if we're gonna impact that area...
Okay, I guess we have one, Kathy's here.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
We've received one written, one more written request to speak, that's Jean Hunt. He wants to talk to council about the RTG properties. Jean?
Thanks for hearing us here. I, I, I wanted to discuss the RTG properties on 465 Valley, Valley Road. Apparently, it's a medical marijuana, uh, sales outlet, I don't know that. I don't know that it's active anymore, I know at one point it was. The concerns I have, as I drove by the other day, as there was some work going on in there, there was plastic pipes moving around, there were obviously being some changes made to the building and/or inside of the building. That, that tweaks me and it starts me worrying about things like Pueblo and Pueblo West, and some of the problems they've had with their little grow facilities there. And, and so I guess my inquiries with my friends around, and that's, that's all these are, it's, it's all informal, everybody started calling and asking people, okay, is this legal? Depending on who they talked to, some members of the city council were convinced that, yeah, this is legal, there's not much we can do about it, and others were, at least one other indicated that, no, this is not legal. So, I guess my, my questions here are, have we resolved that this is an active medical marijuana outlet, number one? If, if, if it isn't, I'd like to know, so I could pass this on to people that are concerned as well. I, I, I went over to the building myself, walked around a little bit, trying to discern what I was looking at. When I got done driving, driving around, walking around, it was obvious that nothing was happening at that building at that time. This was Sunday, okay? There was some junk laying out around the building, et cetera. I was not too concerned about that. But, I guess, in, if, as, as a business, I believe there are supposed to be several postings on or near that building that would indicate who to call in emergencies, things of that nature, that are not on that building. That's a public security and public safety requirements. I believe, again, if this is an active medical marijuana outlet, that those things need to be posted, and it's in our city laws or regs, or, I'm not even sure what we call them anymore, but the bottom line is, if they're not, if they're not taken care of, then we have some recourse for these people to go in there and, and straighten them out, possibly fines and things like that. Is the work that's being done there permitted by the city? Another thing on the regulation says, any changes to those buildings, inside or outside, have to be permitted by the city if they are in fact active. Again, this all boils down to, are we just worrying about something that's none of our business, okay? But the bottom line is, if those changes are there, and that's not permitted work, why not? The, the thing that, that comes to my mind, the thing that really bothers me about some of this stuff, is that I feel like, as citizens, we're losing some transparency here, that we deserve as a public, when it comes to handling these particular high-profile situations. There's, there's no reason people should be driving by and seeing construction work on these things, and, and not know what's going on. There's no reason I shouldn't be able to pull immediately the information off of that building up, see whose work it is, who, who's, who's doing the work, who it is, nothing like that. I look at transparency issue, I worry about, because we're not willing to handle something, or maybe we're doing a little too much analysis, that we, we're gonna turn into a pueblo. We don't need to be a pueblo, not up in that area, especially in our town, period. Seventeen seconds left, I'll get through this. I guess the other thing that worries me here, as a governing body, I'm really concerned that our drive for revenues might just be overriding some of our potential moral decision-making. I want to be sure that we're not letting money overpower morals on our decisions as a city. For that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any comments or questions of council?
Go ahead, Jimmy.
I just want to be perfectly clear, uh, this, we voted on recreational, and what you're seeing in Pueblo is recreational. As far as this council knows, there is no medical marijuana facility being put there. I'm sure you could call Greg, the building inspector, and ask him questions about any buildings under construction, and he would investigate, but thank you for your time, appreciate your concern.
Thank you. I do have, are, are you suggesting that this is a, a growth or a retail outlet?
It looks to me like, it looks to me like, out of this, these people's mouths, that they are planning on converting this to a grow facility for authorized medical marijuana users that can't grow it in their own home.
It's my understanding that, that if we've got a growth problem, if we have a complaint, then we have a code enforcement officer in conjunction with a police officer that responds to that. Isn't that what we decided?
Now, this is the Helsley-owned property, which I think she wants to characterize these days as a club. It's certainly an unlicensed facility. The city licenses medical marijuana centers, the city's voters voted down any form of retail marijuana establishment. The operation, to the extent there is an operation there, is, is unlicensed, as you have heard from me before, doesn't meet with the requirements of our zoning code as, as currently written. I believe the former city administrator... I believe the former city administrator, who acted as the zoning administrator, agreed, and, and I think council agreed with him, to postpone any ultimate decision regarding this facility until a, a future date, which I would hope would have us focus on, on that particular issue once the new city administrator is on board and serving as a zoning administrator, or, or having, or after he has appointed somebody to serve in that capacity. But right now, it's, it's an unlicensed operation, that, to be fair to the owner, she believes is legitimate under both local and state law. I don't agree with her on either point, but we don't, we don't, as a city, enforce state laws. Uh, city laws are what they are today. They may or may not be changed depending on, on what council decides to do upon revisiting this issue, I think sometime in the near future. You're not the only person that has raised this particular complaint within the last week or ten days.
So John, is it my understanding that there is an unpermitted? Is there, has there been a permit pulled, a building permit pulled for there?
I cannot answer whether a building permit has, has been pulled with respect to anything that's happened there. And I don't know that one, one is absolutely necessary. From what I've heard from calls I've received, there were materials, including piping, that, that at one point was outside, that now appears to be inside, but I don't know of any work actually going on with or without a building permit.
This is the same building that they used to have?
This is, by the way, for those of you familiar with the building and the area, at one time, this was a city and state licensed retail medical, or not retail, medical marijuana center with a, a license for growing as well. So it operated in that capacity. Uh, but that license was surrendered, Kathy, I don't know, at least a year ago, maybe longer. So, this is a new tenant and a new use, and it's so far being operated, to the extent it's operating, as an unlicensed facility by the state or the city.
Are you saying it's also at this point unpermitted?
To the extent a permit might be required for anything construction-wise being done, I'm not aware whether there was or was not a building permit issued.
We appreciate anything you guys can look at.
Yeah, when, when this matter comes before council, it will be on an agenda, and you'll have that opportunity to come down and, and see what council is doing.
Ms. Smith?
John, would it be appropriate for citizens to go to canyoncity.org and file a code violation?
Well, again...
To have code enforcement come and look at this and see what's going on?
I thought that was the process.
Well, we can certainly, we, people from the, the code enforcement side of the aisle have been out there. I've been out there, the planner's been out there, the administrator, wearing his zoning administrator hat, has been out there. Every time we've gone, we, we couldn't gain access inside. The police have gone, and I think been both inside and outside, if I understand, report back. Um, there, there were reports of plants existing on the, on the premises that, that would be, according to the information provided by the owner, plants owned by others, that, that the operator of the club is assisting in, in growing marijuana. That either is happening or is proposed to happen. Again, my view is it ought to be licensed, that's, at least by the state. It ought to be licensed and/or regulated by the city. It currently violates zoning, but council wanted to take a second closer look. And the, the action of the zoning administrator was to basically place this matter on hold until that second look had been taken. So we, we can certainly go look as, as soon as tomorrow, if, if that's council's desire.
I was under the impression that we had all essentially said, "Because there is no guideline, we're gonna leave it." But if we've got an issue that has now come to point, then I don't know that we haven't, don't have an obligation to try to address it.
We, we do have a, a group of citizens, I don't know how large it is, but at least a few people, and maybe quite a few people, particularly in the Dawson Ranch area, who are concerned about a marijuana growth facility of any sort being so close to their particular part of the world.
Then I think it gets pretty much put on front burner, because all of our, our marijuana ordinances are, are based on, on citizens' complaints. I mean, this is discussion, it's not a matter of fact or point. Does anybody else feel that way, or?
That's my point, is that I understood that we had this question about, at what point do we go in and inspect a residence, or whatever it is, that, that potentially is in violation? And if we had a complaint, we would then send our code enforcement officer and a police officer for protection to inspect that growth that was a complaint. And if we have that, I, I don't know how we can not respond.
Ms. Hensley's here, I'd like to hear from her, but I'd also like to bring up the point that all of us here agreed to see where that would go up there, and we haven't set a timeline date. So before we enforce it, she was the one exception we did make. We should create some kind of timeline for her to be permitted or regulated.
I don't recall ever making an exception. At no point did we make an exception.
We would talk about a special use permit.
Special use permit.
And that discussion hasn't taken place.
I, I think if you...
Okay, we're getting real far afield here. Do we want to debate it tonight, or do we want to put it on the agenda, as we discussed, when the new administrator gets in place? We could sit here for a very long time discussing it. Is that what you want to do, or do you want to go on with the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would propose that we put it on an agenda item for a later meeting.
Okay.
And let's have all the facts in front of us.
That's what I understood it to be, and we were going to talk about when the new administrator gets here on June 1st. Because he has experience.
Are you wanting it on that general government meeting, the eighth, or you want to put it a little bit later, let him get acclimated?
He'll be apprised of the situation. I would like to get it on as soon as possible. What does council think?
I concur.
So, if, again, if we put it on the June 8th meeting, um, that gives the new administrator about ten days to...
Huh?
It's not much time.
Not much time.
We have a pretty full agenda on the June 8th already, don't we?
Sometime in June, though, I would, I would think that...
I keep adding it up in my head. It's getting full.
We're hiring a well-experienced individual, but doesn't probably need a lot of lead time.
Do we have to limit it to Wednesday meetings, or can we put it on a Monday night?
Well, we could, we could go the eighth and the 22nd, too. I mean...
Twenty-second make, to me, makes better sense than the eighth, in terms of, of staff being ready.
Yeah, and that puts it on Scott's agenda.
Sweet.
Six twenty-two. June, June 22nd at 4:00 PM in this, in this room.
That's what we call the Public Works Committee meeting. Okay?
And we'll postpone the code enforcement thing until then?
With the agreement was...
Because they would like to, Haven's, asked the direction the council would like to go with that, code enforcement, on this specific property.
The last directive staff heard from the zoning administrator was, "No enforcement until council has looked at this issue more closely." You could, of course, override that, but that's the last thing staff heard on, on the issue from the zoning administrator.
I, I would like for the staff to know, have a clear idea of what's going on up there. I think...
I think that's the right direction to head. I mean, put it through, uh, government committee?
Yeah.
And no, no enforcement at this point.
Talk with the property owner and the business owner.
Find out exactly what's going on, what should be done, what needs to be done, and go forward from there.
I agree, we should definitely gather intel.
So you're saying direct staff to go up there and see what's going on? In the meantime, and report back.
I don't think we should throw the book at the facility.
But to send the code enforcement officer in the police house.
Yeah, I, I think we need to gather evidence, as part of that evidence would be to have a code enforcement officer verify things from a city's viewpoint, and Ms. Hensley, is that right? I would hope that she would allow access for us to help...
Helsley.
Helsley, I'm sorry.
Okay. So then, 22nd comes to committee. It's, it would even be appropriate if you want to go with the code enforcement officer or some of the city council members, and the police officer, if you want to do that. I have been there. Okay?
That's all I have for citizens' requests to speak.
That's it? All right. Thank you. Um, and thank you for the comments. Moving on to step number seven, ordinance number seven, series 2016. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number seven, series of 2016, and ordinance annexing certain unincorporated lands, commonly known as the S and D Smith annexation, to the city of Canyon City, Colorado.
Just a clarification, that is the correct name. We don't have that correct, right?
S and D Smith.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion and a second from council? Ms. Ekstrom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve ordinance number seven, series of 2016, on second reading.
Second.
Second. Ms. Schumacher, are there any discussions on the motion? Mr. Weed?
Yeah, again, um, this was a, the first reading took place at a meeting. I wasn't here. I guess my question is for the council members who were here, or for the city attorney. Is there a benefit to annexing this piece of property to the city?
I can tell you, the planning commission determined there would be.
They determined there was a benefit, or they determined that it qualified?
Determined that there would be a benefit, which was, which is part of the suitability inquiry.
Can we quantify that benefit?
I mean, it adds new land of the city adjacent to an existing city boundary that would be taxable land of the city. It's already served by, uh, city water, and, and, and is, is, is a type of land you would, uh, easily incorporate into the city. There will be tax dollars, though they're not that significant, given our mill levy, but there will be tax dollars generated from this property, and more tax dollars when structures are built on the two resulting properties. The owners plan to keep approximately ten acres for their home, and, and then to take the other lot, which would be a little more than an acre, and develop it as well sometime in the future.
Okay.
Okay, motion made. Second, there hasn't been discussion. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, moving on to ordinance number eight, series 2016. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number eight, series of 2016, and, and ordinance zoning certain property recently annexed into the city of Canyon City, Colorado, the S and D Smith annexation.
Could I have a motion, second from council? Ms. Ekstrom?
Thanks again, Mayor. Um, I move that we approve ordinance number eight, series of 2016, on second reading.
Second.
Second, Ms. Schumacher. Good. Are there any discussions on the motion? Okay, well. Appearing there's no motions or discussion, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Ekstrom. Sorry.
Councilmember Ekstrom. Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
That's why you are in the big bucks. Okay. We're going to open a public hearing on the application for a special event liquor license to the Chamber of Commerce for entertainment in the park. Could I have a report from the city clerk, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Lisa Heim. She's the director of the Canyon City Chamber of Commerce, who's applied to this council for three special event liquor permits from, for June 30th, July 28th, and September 1st, between the hours of 4:00 PM and 10:00 PM, as part of their entertainment in the park, uh, summer concerts. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting, uh, the location in the park. These are three of several liquor licenses events that the chamber has conducted throughout the last few years, for which there have never been resulting concerns. Alcohol sales at these events are being conducted as a fundraiser and to celebrate another successful season of entertainment in the park. They will have a small beer garden in which alcohol will be served and consumed. The entire park will not be licensed for alcohol sales or consumption. There will be only one point of entry, and IDs will be checked by trained volunteers. An onsite inspection of these premises will be conducted each day of the event, and once all those requirements have been met, a permit for that, that one day will be issued on each separate day. So with that, upon review of the application, it has been noted and determined that the fees have been submitted, the diagram meets filing requirements. The applicant has obtained permission to use the park through a park use permit, and the corporation is in good standing with the Secretary of State. So with that, I open up to you have questions that council may have of the applicant.
Any questions of council? Well, Mr. Weed?
Gee, thanks.
Get through these.
Hi, Lisa.
Hello, Dennis.
Let me see here. All right, one, are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes, sir, we are.
Figured you were. Is there a copy of Liquor Code on file with your organization?
Yes, sir, there is.
How many volunteers do you have planning for this event?
Uh, we have a total of four volunteers that will be assisting during the three. We probably will have two serving at a time, but, but there will be four of us.
Okay, and how are the, those people going to be trained on the Liquor Code?
They have all been trained through the city, through Kathy Robbie, um, right here, I think, in the, the general government room.
Couldn't ask for more. Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code, and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization, and, and as well as future licensing?
Yes, sir, I am.
Now, tell us about, anything else about these events?
We've got a great year planned for entertainment in the park. Um, we have all groups, with the exception of Donovan Lee and Drew Frady. Um, they're all local. Um, I say local, we have a group from Cotopaxi, we have a group from Silver Cliff. Um, it's, it's, we have a sound man this year that is really gonna make it sound fantastic. Obviously, these three events that have our liquor licenses are, are end-of-month festivals. Deja Blues will be June, Indigo Way will be July, and Atomic Fireballs will be our season finale. Um, all three groups were well-received last year. Um, we're working very hard. It's, it's gonna be a great year. We have a, a lot of enthusiastic people that are looking forward to a bigger and better year this year for entertainment in the park. So that will be every Tuesday night. We have moved the time up to 6:30. It will end at 8:30. Um, that is, you know, and sometimes, you know, our end-of-month festival kind of goes on for another thirty minutes, because everybody's loving it and giving them standing ovations. But, uh, we're hoping that we'll be able to get more families, so people will be done at 8:30. Bring the kids, you know, lay a blanket out on the lawn, and, and have a picnic dinner out there, and, and I'm hoping to work with the restaurants on Main Street, and have a restaurant be featured each week, and invite them to create a, a picnic basket that people can call and just ask for two, or three, or four people, and, and really include the businesses in it this year, and, and make it a community, even a bigger and better community event.
I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Weed. Are there any comments from the audience? And I'm gonna go ahead and close the public. Yes, Mr. Meisner?
You mentioned, you mentioned six?
Six what, sir?
Time.
Six what?
I thought you mentioned a time from six o'clock?
Six thirty to eight thirty.
Is that for the liquor permits?
Uh, their liquor permit is earlier than that, because the liquor will be on site, so... Right. Their liquor permit is... We ask, we ask for it for a little longer in front and, and more in back, because people come a little early before the music starts, and they sit down and start to have dinner, and, and so we do give a little time on either side of the actual music for people to be able to. A lot of times, at the end of playing, the band members will like to come have a beer, so that's why we extend the license a little bit beyond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, did you have a comment? Sticking up for you.
And I, I just want to put in here that we are continuing to receive sponsorships for the event, and I just want to let the city know that that is going well.
Okay, thank you. Now, I am going to clo- what, are you? I'm sorry. I'm gonna close the public hearing right now, so we're closed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion and a second from council. Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, make motion to approve the application for a special event liquor permit to the Chamber of Commerce for their entertainment in the park. events on June 28th, July 26th, and August 30th.
Any discussion on the motion? Oh, I'm sorry, do I need a second?
Second.
Ms. Schumacher, second. Ms. Schumacher, could I have a, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, before I open the next public hearing, I was wondering, we had the Fremont Community Foundation for three liquor permits. Do we have to do, could we do those in bulk, so to speak, instead of having just open and shut, and open and shut, and shut?
Practice has been to have separate hearings. If there should be an issue with respect to any of them, then there ought to be a separate record as to.
Okay.
Actually, and also there are different locations, and so with the chamber, we were able to lump those together. Those three are all the same beer garden, they are not moving in size, in location of Veterans Park, so that's how we were able to lump those together. These are in separate parks, separate days, separate events, so.
Okay, we'll do them.
Different people may have different.
Okay. We'll do them separate, then. Okay. Public hearing application for a special event liquor permit, Fremont Community Foundation Whitewater Festival. I'm going to open the public hearing at this time, could I report from the city clerk?
We'll get through these, Dan's a pro at this, so we'll do these.
All right, counting on you, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Dan Brown, who's representing the foundation, who's applied for a special liquor permit for June 24th and 25th through Centennial Park for the Whitewater Festival. Notice of the public hearing was given by posting the location in the park. Activities for the Whitewater events include live music as well as a fun zone for kids. There will be a variety of food and merchandise vendors. Beer sales will stop at 11:00 p.m. on both days with security and cleanup allowed until midnight. As in years past, a substantial beer garden has been designated by the organization, beginning at the bridge over the river on the north side, then on to Griffin Avenue on the south side and extending from the eastern boundary of the park westerly to the other side of the playground area. Alcohol sales and consumption will be limited to the fenced area. The substantial beer garden has been designated in order to provide the opportunity for both participants and spectators to consume alcoholic beverages while watching the events from the riverbank. All individuals will be checked at the entrances, and individuals 21 and up will receive a wristband, and those under 21 will receive a black X on their hands. Many of these volunteers from this organization have attended the training in the past. They will be providing security along with a security company that they have also hired. An onsite inspection of the premises will be conducted the day of the event, and once that inspection has been fulfilled, a permit will then be issued. Upon determining the application fees have been submitted, the diagram meets filing requirements, it hasn't changed right down? The diagram?
The setup's a little bit different, but the perimeter's still the same.
Okay. That was, we were, we were waiting for that diagram to come in, and it came in and it looked like the same, just the inside of the perimeter had changed a little bit. And they have obtained a park use permit, and they are in good standing with the Secretary of State's office. So with that, I'd open it up. Do you have any questions about this event?
Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Dan, thanks for coming. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes.
Do you have a copy?
Yes.
Uh, how many volunteers are you going to have for this event?
The Whitewater Festival with the two bars that we have will probably have over 25 volunteers for the two-day period.
And how are they trained on the Liquor Code?
They've all been trained through the city in the past.
Perfect. Are you aware that you're fully? Are you fully aware? That you're responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may held against you and/or your organization, as well as future licensing?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about the Whitewater Festival, or anything else you'd like to tell us about the event?
We'll do the Whitewater, Whitewater, I would guess, most of you have been there. We're expecting bigger crowds this year, we're hoping for. We just changed the inside a little bit, we moved things around. There's, there was, has been a problem with the grass where we put the stage every year, where the stage likes to sink it to the ground, so we just moved it around. Everything else be basically the same. Pushing for a big event, it's always dependent on weather and water, so we'll see what happens, but hopefully you guys have all been to it, at least for a little while in the past.
Not placing the stage in the bog?
No, taking the stage out of the bog.
Okay.
Water shouldn't be an issue.
But it always is, we either have not enough or too much.
Too much or not enough.
Okay. Thank you, any other questions of the council? Any further questions of council? Any questions from the audience? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion and a second. Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, make the motion, motion to approve the application for a special event liquor permit for Fremont Community Foundation, June 24th and 25th, for the Whitewater Festival in Centennial Park.
Second?
Second.
Who's second? Mr. Ekstrom's second? Any discussion on the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, going to open another public hearing, just stay where you are. Application for special event liquor permit, Fremont Community Foundation for the Fireman's Ball. The public hearing is hereby open, could I have a report from the city clerk?
Actually, we did Dan a favor, we got him here all in one night, right?
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, this is Dan Brown and a few of the fellows. I don't know who you are, so you might as well state your name here with the fire department.
My name's Logan Hillburn.
Mike Ortega.
Thank you, guys, for being here. They have applied for a special event permit for August 13th in Veterans Park for the annual Fireman's Ball. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting a location in that park. They plan on hosting a family-style event that will include food, entertainment, auction, and games. This event is the only fundraising event held annually for the Canyon City Volunteer Fire Department. All proceeds will go toward assisting this volunteer organization with purchase of gear and equipment. All individuals will be checked at the entrances, and individuals 21 and up will receive a wristband. Many of the volunteers have attended training in the past and will help with the security and enforcement around the perimeter. Upon review of the application, the appropriate fees have been submitted, the diagram meets filing requirements. They have obtained a park use permit, and they are in good standing with the Secretary of State's office. So with that, I would open up to any questions you may, further questions you may have of the event.
Thank you, Kathy. Ms. Smith?
Um, Dan Brown, are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes.
Is there a copy of the Liquor Code on file with your organization?
Yes.
How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
Uh, this will be mostly our board members with some volunteer firemen help, so it'll probably be 20 of us throughout the day.
How will they be trained on the Liquor Code and liquor laws?
Uh, we have all been trained on the board and the volunteer fire crew, some of them have, and the ones that haven't will be overseeing the whole, the whole weekend, or the whole night, evening.
Are you aware that you're responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization, as well as future licenses?
Yes.
Okay, let's hear more about your event, then.
That's why these guys are here.
This is a new one for them.
Didn't realize you're going to have to talk, we just tell them what we're going to do, what I have to do.
The Fireman's Ball is usually held at Whitewater Bar and Grill, but throughout the last couple of years, we've had some complaints from people in the community. Back in the past, it used to be held in parks or somewhere within the community, and some of the complaints stated that it's not really family-oriented anymore, it's more towards the adult side of it. And they were asking us to do something more family-oriented, so this year, we're going to give it a shot, bring it back to town. We're going to open it up at 1:00 in the afternoon, have lots of kids' activities going on, little, like Fireman Challenge for kids to do. There's going to be bounce houses, water balloon fights, things like that. And then later on in the afternoon, it's going to turn into more of an adult party kind of a thing, but there's still going to be child vision, so they can still hang out and have a good time while their parents are listening to music and dancing and having fun.
We also open it up to local vendors, food vendors, so there'll be a variety of food offered throughout the day. So that was something we wanted to do different also, also get some, give back a little bit to the community.
Thank you, any other questions from council?
May I move that we approve that?
Any comments from the audience who would like to chime in here? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion and a second from council. Ms. Smith?
May I move that we approve the application for a special event liquor permit for Fremont Community Foundation on August 13th at Veterans Park for the Fireman's Ball?
Second.
Mr. Weed, second. Would you, motion, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, stay where you are. No, not the firemen, I'm sorry. Dan, okay. I'm going to have open public hearing for application, special event liquor permit, Fremont Community Foundation for the Brew Fest. Public hearing is hereby open, could I have a report from the city clerk?
Mayor, members of council, this, once again, is a new event for these folks. Just a new event, not another new way of doing it. However, they've applied for a special event liquor permit for August 6th for Centennial Park for their brews over the Arkansas River event. Notice of public hearing was given by posting the location in the park. This will be a beer tasting event featuring microbrews from all over Colorado. An entry fee will include 10 tickets for the ability to taste the many different types of craft beer over a four-hour tasting period. Individuals will be checked at the entrance, and ages 21 and up will receive a wristband. The organization will contract with the local merchant patrol company, who along with their volunteers from the organization, provide security enforcement around the perimeter and patrolling the event. An onsite inspection will also happen at this event, and once those requirements have been fulfilled, the permit will be issued that day as well. Upon reviewing the application, the appropriate fee has been submitted, the diagram meets filing requirements, they have obtained a park use permit, and again, the corporation is in good standing with the Secretary of State's office. So with that, I'd open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions of the applicant from council? Ms. Sheu?
Do you want me to ask them?
Yeah, right. Who is going to do that? Mr. Ekstrom?
Thank you. Hi, Dan.
Hi, Scott.
All right. Are you familiar with the Liquor Code, and do you have a copy?
Yes.
Great. How many volunteers for this event, and how will they be trained?
Uh, the volunteers will just be our board members, are 11 of the, 11 of them on the board, and we've all been trained through the city.
Is this the type of event where the actual brewers will have their?
Yep.
Yep, and those, and it's my understanding that they're already trained as well when they come in?
Yeah, they are.
There will be an onsite, like we do with, with you guys, too, that they'll have to sign off on.
Yep, great. And then, are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization, as well as future licensing?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, so tell us about this new event.
Well, we're following the footprint of Ride the Rockies a couple of years ago. If you, anyone went to that, we're on the bridge, and then we're just right on the bank of the river, and it was beautiful, turned out really well. So we're inviting brewers, and we have talked to Sid Darden, and we can have home brewers there also. So if you want to taste someone's brew that they made at their house, they'll be, we're going to have a handful of home brewers there. We'll make sure that they're trained also, and at least we'll be supervising anything that they do. As far as serving, we're going to have a 16-ounce glass, but it's going to have a 4-ounce pour line. The reason we get a 16-ounce glass, because they're half the price of those little 4-ounce glasses, because they're just more common. And it's going to be a quick event, we'll have a VIP hour from noon to 1:00. If you want to pay extra money, get in early, get a T-shirt, something to eat. And it just goes from 1:00 to 5:00, and then we're done with it.
That's fun. Any other questions of council? Any questions from the audience? Going to go ahead and close the public, public hearing and ask for a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion then that we approve this special event liquor license for Fremont Community Foundation for the brew over Arkansas.
Thank you, Ms. Ekstrom, second?
Second.
I have Mr. Weed first, second, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks.
You may leave now.
Yeah, it's going to be a couple of months before you see me now, things go right.
Promise.
Thank you. Okay, going to open another public hearing for application for a special event liquor permit for Create Your Community Balloon Festival. And hereby open the public hearing, would you have the report, Ms. Kathy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Rob Brown, representing Create Your Community, who has applied for this council for a special event liquor permit for May 28th and 29th at the Holy Cross Abbey for the annual balloon festival. Notice of the public hearing was given by posting a tree near the site. This event was, will be limited to the Abbey Events Complex and will be limited exclusively to that campus this year. There will be a number of vendors, including those serving food and live music. The libation station will be separated from the general event by fencing. This is the organization's first event and includes alcohol sales. While their volunteers have not attended any liquor training, they will utilize the Canyon City Chamber of Commerce to assist with the sale and services of alcohol beverages. All individuals will be checked at the entrance, and individuals 21 and up will receive a wristband. Volunteers from the organization and the Chamber of Commerce will provide security and enforcement assistance around the perimeter and in patrolling the event. An onsite inspection of the premises will be conducted on the day of the event, and once all the requirements of that inspection has been fulfilled, then the license will be issued. Upon review of the application, the fee has been submitted, the diagram meets filing requirements, the applicant has obtained permission to use the premises through the Abbey, and the corporation is in good standing with the Secretary of State. So with that, I'd open up to any questions you may have.
Thank you, any questions of council? Any questions of council? Ms. Schumacher.
I brought backup, just in case you're wondering. I'm ready.
Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes.
Is there a copy of the liquor code on file with your organization?
Yes.
How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
Ten to twelve.
How will they be trained on the liquor code and liquor laws?
We're taking advantage of the fact that the Canyon City Chamber of Commerce is gonna actually be our partner on this. They've been trained by the city. They're very familiar with the procedures and they'll, they're gonna actually take on that portion for us.
They are, thank you. Are you fully aware that you're responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization as well as future licensing? Tell us about it.
Well, it just occurred to me that this is the fourth Brown in a row that has spoke about a special event liquor permit, and I know from my good Irish background...
I didn't call you Dan.
That may mean something. I, I don't know exactly what it means, but Create Canyon City Balloon Classic, this is our third annual event. This is the first year that we've taken on the entire event, including the liquor operation, and we're calling it our libation station because we're going to serve both beer and wine hosted by the winery at the Abbey. We've consolidated the premises to the Abbey complex. In prior years, we made use of more of the ground around there, so we're actually gonna consolidate it on the Abbey complex. We feel like that'll be more conducive to coming and staying and enjoying it. So it's gonna be a nice event, weather permitting. The balloons will go in the air at six AM in the morning, but the balance of the activities will go on regardless and will go well into the evening. We have kids stations during the day and then the libation station and live music in the evening. Be a nice event and it'll be a good opportunity for Create Canyon City to collaborate with the Canyon City Chamber of Commerce and St. Thomas More Hospital, our primary sponsor, and the winery and many others, and take advantage of all of these great things they have to offer. So thank you.
What was the date again, please? The date?
Date, Memorial Day weekend, so it'll be primarily on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. If the balloons, for some reason, can't go up one of those days, then we will let the balloons off on Monday as well, but the liquor part of the event will be the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
And do you have approximate amount of balloons you might have?
We have eighteen balloons committed, which is the most we've had so far, and we're expecting a, a good turnout.
Great, great. Any comments from the audience? Mr. Weed?
Thank you. Rob, you know, it's, just, do they do an evening balloon glow, kinda like they do in Colorado Springs?
Yeah, they do, specific to the balloons. First of all, thank you very much, city council, the mayor and staff for enduring what I know is beginning to be a very long meeting, so I was trying to be brief, but we have, the balloons go off at six AM, but in the evening, we have a glow around eight o'clock where we actually inflate the balloons, and then at the twilight, it's very impressive when you see those balloons inflated and it's choreographed to some music. If Mother Nature doesn't participate and doesn't want us to stand those balloons up, then we'll do what we call candles in the park, which we actually don't put up the canopies, but the balloon baskets with those million BTU burners, and that is also very impressive. So regardless, we'll have a good time and, and all the while, we'll have live music in the background and the libation station will be open.
Well, good luck with it. I'm excited for it and thanks for putting it on.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanna make a quick mention that we also are gonna have food vendors at, at the event and also arts and crafts.
It's gonna be a lot of vendors, a lot of great stuff.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
Mr. Havens.
Rob, one more, one more question.
Apologies, I didn't see that.
Shrinking the size of, of where the event will occur, where, where will parking be permitted and not be permitted?
Parking, parking will be permitted on the, on the Linder side or on the, the west side of the, of the Abbey campus, so that's where the main entrance will be from Reynolds, and that'll be where the main parking will be as well.
Parking to the east that's been used in prior years will be off limits?
It's, that's the, the winery's property over there, and it certainly, we don't intend to park there, but we have a willing sponsor and participant in the winery and they're very understanding, but their business operations will be open, so we'd encourage the public to park on the west side, that would be the best access. And, and really, the reason for consolidating is so people didn't have to walk back and forth from the Abbey to the winery, that's a, that's an extended distance there.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and close the, the public hearing, and could I have a motion, second? Ms. Schumacher?
Yes, I make a motion that we accept the application, or approve the application for the special event liquor permit for Create Your Community, Inc., May twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth at the Holy Cross Abbey for the balloon festival.
Second. Mr. Weed, second. Any discussion on the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, and I gotta tell you, everybody on the left here, you're falling behind in your motions and everything, these guys are beating you.
You look into the room.
What? No, I looked over there. Okay, all right.
That's 'cause he knows how to do it.
We just quit holding up our hands. We just talk.
There's just more of you. Okay, let's continue on then. Public hearing, application for a special event liquor permit, Future of Yesterday for an outside market. I'm gonna hereby open a public hearing. Could I have a report from the city clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Erica Coning, is that right?
Yes.
Sorry. Emareta Shoraki, who's representing the Future of Yesterday Foundation, who's applied to this council for five special liquor events, all on one site for the dates of June seventeenth, June thirtieth, July fourteenth, July twenty-eighth, and August eleventh, for hosting an outdoor market. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting that location. This is one of several liquor licensed events that this organization has conducted with no concerns of any of the previous events. This event will be, entail a number of vendors to include food and craft vendors and entertainment throughout the evening. Alcohol sales at this event will be conducted as a fundraiser for the organization to go towards the St. Cloud Restoration Fund. Only individuals age twenty-one and up will be allowed to attend this event. The volunteers... Do you want to clarify that, how they're gonna be marked?
It's actually, well, first, the first one is actually June sixteenth, not the seventeenth, and it's open to all ages, 'cause it's a family event.
Well, they, you'll be checking IDs and putting wristbands?
Checking IDs at the only entrance of the event. People over twenty-one will be getting wristbands, people under twenty-one will be getting X's on their hands.
Perfect, perfect. Alcohol sales, let's see, individuals, there will be one sole entrance to that where IDs will be checked. The patrolling of this event will be through the volunteers of this organization. An onsite inspection on each day will be conducted. Once all the requirements of that inspection have been fulfilled, the permit will be issued. Upon inspection of the application, it's been determined that the appropriate fees have been submitted, the diagram meets filing requirements, applicant obtained permission for the use of the premises, and the organization is in good standing with the Secretary of State. So my tongue is now sticking to the top.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? Mr. Meisner, thank you.
Welcome. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes.
Is there a copy of the liquor code on file with your organization?
Yes.
How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event, or events?
Between eight and ten.
How will you, they be trained on the liquor code and liquor laws?
They've all taken the class with the city.
Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization as well as future licensing?
Yes.
Can you let us know a little more about your event?
Sure. So the idea behind Night Market, it's a time for individuals in our city that work until five o'clock, who can't maybe get out to all of those great local vendors we have, both here in Canyon and our fellow town Florence. It's a chance for everyone to bring their families out, enjoy live music from local bands. I'm also reaching out to the high school marching band, so they will have an additional venue that they can play and exhibit their talents at. We will have food trucks from all the local food trucks in our area. I'm reaching out to local farm stands. We have hand-selected merchants from both the downtown business districts of Canyon City and Florence, and we have some people that are also just great makers, jewelry makers, clothing makers, things like that, that live in our community, that sell their wares, that now will have an opportunity to reach out to our community. It will also be all to benefit the Future of Yesterday, so while you're there, you're helping with a good cause to restore the Hotel St. Cloud, which sits down on Main Street, which I'm sure you're all aware of. And in the future, we're hoping that this event can become a regular thing our community can get behind, and eventually, maybe one day, do it every Thursday night during the summertime and give us all a place to go on Thursday nights with everyone we love and enjoy the community that we love.
What, the location's gonna be at the Robeson Mansion?
Yes, so the, the location is twelve Riverside Drive, the Robeson Mansion. Mm-hmm. Is it from five to ten, is that the... It is from five to ten, so gates will open at five and it closes at ten PM.
Sounds interesting. Well, thank you. Any comments or questions from the audience? Or from council?
It's not gonna be at the Carriage House?
Not at the Carriage House, but we're on the agenda for something next that would allow it to move to the Carriage House.
Are you familiar with the applicant?
Yeah.
I'm just, just spitballing here. Mr. Weed, sorry.
Yeah, I, I just had a question on the back of the application. The ten dollar and twenty-five dollar per day fees are marked off and it's, seems to indicate it's a hundred dollars per day, and what's the reason for that?
Quite some time ago, we were having issues with special events. They were, they didn't know, organizations didn't know they were gonna have a special event until a month before or even sometimes even shorter time, and so by the time we sent it to the state and the state would give it back to us, the state had, had allowed the municipalities to opt out of submitting it to the state and getting approved from the state. About seven years ago, I think, we opted out of having them approve it, so it's just approved locally with us informing them and notifying them of the event. So they get no money and we get the hundred dollars.
But these, the, the ones that we've previously approved tonight, they're all twenty...
They were marked out. These were, yeah, the, the ones that were, have done it before, they know what it is. These guys were kinda brand-new, and so I marked it out for them to let them know what, what to expect.
Okay.
But it is a hundred dollars to the state and nothing, to the city and nothing to the state.
Okay.
Any further questions? I'm gonna close the public hearing, thank you so much, and I have a motion and a second from council. Mr. Meisner?
Mayor and council, I move that we apply, we approve the application for special event liquor permit for Future of Yesterday for June seventeenth, June thirtieth, July fourteenth, July twenty-eighth, August eleventh, at twelve Riverside Drive for the outside market.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna second that, but with a modification, that we need to change that first date to the sixteenth, as requested.
Okay. So the, is that okay to modify the motion for you, Mr. Meisner?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And second, Mr. Ekstrom?
Yes.
Would you call the roll, please? Any discussion on that motion besides that? Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoraki.
I'd recuse myself, being that I'm the vice president of the Future of Yesterday Foundation, and I'm heavily involved with restoring that building.
I believe that should've been, he could vote no, I guess.
I...
To recuse.
Had, had we been on our toes better, we probably would've announced that before the public hearing started or right at, at the beginning, but it's the proper thing to do. I'm disgusted.
Okay.
Jimmy, do you wanna go ahead and ask to be recused, or do you wanna vote no?
I'll make the motion to allow Jimmy to recuse himself for this vote.
Motion's been made, Mr. Weed, here, second, to allow Mr. Shoraki to recuse himself.
Second.
Smith? Motion made, second. Could we call the roll on both issues then at one time?
We'll have to recuse him first and then he would have...
Recuse you first. Yeah, let's call the roll for the recusal of Mr. Shoraki.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoraki.
Aye.
To recuse him is voted unanimously. Now we'll go back to the original motion and I will restate the vote. Councilmember Meisner voted aye, councilmember Weed voted aye, councilmember Gill voted aye, Schumacher aye, Ekstrom aye, and Smith aye, with Shoraki recused, approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Before we open this next public hearing, should we ask Mr. Shoraki, or you want to recuse yourself from the next? Let's go ahead and make a motion to allow Mr. Shoraki to recuse himself. Ms. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Shoraki from...
Allow him to recuse himself.
Allow him to...
Recuse.
Recuse himself from this motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Weed, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Shoraki.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay. Mr. Shoraki, there will be excuse from voting on this next issue. A public hearing, by the way, for an application for modification of a tavern liquor license for Tierney Enterprises Limited. I'm gonna go, hereby open the public hearing. Could I have a report from the clerk? City clerk, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Emareta Shoraki and Erin Conig, again, representing the, the proprietess, who's applied for a modification of the permit of a tavern liquor license. Notice of the public hearing was given by posting the location and publishing in the daily record. Pursuant to the municipal code, a public hearing is required for any increase in the total size of capacity for the licensed premises. The increase in, in size will allow for events to be held outdoors. Plans for such events include outdoor markets, weddings, and et cetera. As evidence in support of the proposed change relative to the needs of the neighborhood and desires of the adult inhabitants, the applicant has submitted a petition bearing one hundred and one signatures representing eighty from inside the city limits, nineteen outside the city limits, and two unidentified. Upon review of the application, appropriate fees have been submitted and a new diagram of the premises meets the filing requirements. So with that, I would open it up to the, any questions you may have of the two. I will note that they, they are coming in with a special events permit that just was recently approved in order to buy a little bit of time, so they possibly may be able to, once this modification comes in, they would be doing the outdoor markets over there as well.
Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Meisner?
Sure.
They're catching up.
Welcome again.
Thank you.
I think I have the right thing. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes.
Will there be a copy of the liquor code on file with your establishment?
Yes.
How many employees do you expect to have?
Currently, we have one officially. If we get the expansion approval, then we'll be looking at a manager and a bartender. So two, and then security.
Will they, will they, how will they be trained on the liquor code and liquor laws?
Laws.
How did you acquire signatures on the petition you submitted?
Asked people in our community for them. I went to people who lived in the neighborhood as well as business owners and people who were visiting, 'cause we have a huge visitor population, so there might've been a couple on there from people out of town. I also went to members of our community, like the radio station at KRLN, and asked them if they would support our expansion.
Just to kinda reiterate that, were any of those business owners within the immediate vicinity of your proposed establishment?
There are no businesses within the immediate vicinity of the proposed establishment. It's eight forty South First Street, which is the Carriage House that sits just behind the Robeson Mansion property. So the only other business would be the Robeson Mansion and they're into it.
But you did the residence along there.
I did do the residence, yes, ma'am.
Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your business and result in suspension and/or revocation of your liquor license? Thank you.
Would you tell us a little about your event?
Sure. Sure. So we're asking for the expansion so we can include the outdoor area around the carriage house, which will allow us as a venue to bring in more revenue for the entire city and not just us, because we have a bar license. If we can have outdoor seating, it allows us to hold more weddings, graduation parties, class reunions, and the night market, we'll be able to move there and be able to use the liquor license that Tierney Enterprises already has at the proprietress and not have to bring in a special event permit for the Future of Yesterday.
Okay. And council, any further questions of the applicant? Mr. Meisner?
That completely separate from this other?
Yes, they're completely separate.
The modification probably is not going to be approved by the state within time that they wanted to do their first outdoor market, so they are doing special event to do the outdoor market onto the Robeson Mansion side and then when the modification comes in, then...
Let me move it. Okay.
Question for the record, is there a map or will there be a map showing the revised boundaries?
They have submitted it with dimensions and everything on it to the city clerk, yes they have.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Havens. Any other questions of council? Any comments from the audience? Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion and a second from council. Mr. Meisner?
Mayor, council, I move that we approve the application for modification of a tavern liquor license for Tierney Enterprises Limited, doing business as the proprietoress, is that right? At eight forty South First Street.
Second.
Mr. Weed, second. Any discussion on the motion and the second? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.